Mayor and council members, we are live on YouTube, TV 30. Did you want to do a countdown?
Yes, one second, please. Okay, here we go in five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Good evening, everyone. Like to welcome you to this virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council, six thirty at Monday, February eighth, twenty twenty one. We're going to be getting with a closed session, but the some call immediately to order. And could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
President.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Kik.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Yeah.
Mayor Warner.
Here. Okay, with that, we're going to have the opportunity for the public to address the city council regarding the closed session item. And with that, city clerk, would you inform the public as to how they may participate? We're operating under the COVID rules and the main thing, method for doing that can be found on the agenda. But could you give them the details that they need at the moment in order to participate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform when participating in this portion Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform when participating Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform when participating in this portion of tonight's meeting. One comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session in this portion of tonight's meeting. One comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session of tonight's meeting. One comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session item on the agenda. One comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session item on the agenda. item on the agenda. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature item on the agenda. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in or star nine if calling in when the public comment period opens. Each participant's name or star nine if calling in when the public comment period opens. Each participant's name When the public comment period opens. Each participant's name will be announced and then their three minutes when the public comment period opens. Each participant's name will be announced and then their three minutes when the public comment period opens. Each participant's name will be announced and then their three minutes will be announced and then their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce will be announced and then their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. after comments have been voiced into the record. after comments have been voiced into the record. after comments have been voiced into the record.
Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator? Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator? Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator? Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator? Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator? Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator? Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator? Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator?
No, we do not. 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 No, we do not.
Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now.
Do we sign out here or not? 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 Do we sign out here or not?
Pardon? 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 Pardon?
I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes. I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes. I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes. I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes. I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes. I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes. I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes. I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes.
Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe. Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe.
Okay.
will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record.
Okay, with that, do we have any public comment on our item with regard to our conference with the labor negotiator?
No, we do not.
Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public comment period. And we will now continue this meeting into the closed session regarding the conference with the labor negotiator to meet with Doug Alissio, Administrative Services Director, the city's negotiator pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven dot six regarding negotiations with the Police Officers Association. So we will leave this meeting open, but we're going to ourselves go over to the closed session now.
Do we sign out here or not?
Pardon?
I asked if we signed out here and I saw people shake their head yes.
Yeah, we sign out, but but the meeting is going to be left open by the clerk, I believe.
Okay. Yes. 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 Okay.
Seven o'clock, are we ready to go, or do we need another countdown?
Can we do another countdown, please? And stand by. Here we go, in five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Welcome, everyone, we're returning from the closed session that we started at six thirty, it's now seven o'clock, and we'll begin the, the regular meeting, could we have a, I guess, we have a roll call, please, at this point?
Councilmember Benano?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kik?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. Okay, now I'd like to proceed to the pleas of allegiance, do we have the video on that?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay, everyone can join me on mute, though, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, thank you. Okay. Now with that, I would like to, is there, ask the city attorney, is there any report of action taken in the closed section, session?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jason, I'll call your city attorney, no, no report of action has been taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you, with that, would like to go to item two point one, which, the poet laureate, annual update, so with that, is, there we are, Cynthia Patton, could you join us now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff, and Livermore residents, I'm Cynthia Patton, Livermore's fourth poet laureate, and it's my honor to update you tonight on my activities as poet laureate. So much is different from just a year ago. When I was last here, this, the annual science poetry contest was underway, the school district science odyssey was just around the corner, and I was in the process of moving the Ravenswood Poetry Series to downtown Livermore. This marquee event renamed Verse and Vine was planned to launch in April of 2020, a second new event held at the Bankhead Theater in the lobby was slated to start in the summer. There was cowboy poetry at Hagaman Ranch, a new literary festival at Las Pecitas College, a reading for National Poetry Month in April, and none of that happened, for obvious reasons. The mayor and I weren't even able to hand out awards for the science poetry contest when it concluded. It was difficult to let all those events go, but after several months, it became apparent that isolation would be the new normal for some time. So I pivoted hard, I took the Whistlestop Writers Open Mic virtual in July of 2020, and the Teen Poet of the Month program resumed this fall, despite several technical and logistical glitches that hopefully now have been resolved. In September, I did a reading, virtual, of course, of pandemic poetry that was so well received that the following month, the library and I did a pandemic open mic so that others could share their pandemic poetry. Poetry in a Test Tube, the city's annual science poetry contest, now in its fifth year, launches later this month. Last year, we added a fourth division and had a record number of submissions. The contest has become surprisingly competitive, but is still tremendously fun for all. I've had three parents contacting, contact me this year, asking if the contest will continue, and I'm happy to say that it will, although I'm still deciding what we will do instead of the traditional in-person award ceremony and reading. Later this month, on February twenty second, I'm hosting a social justice poetry reading that I organized on behalf of the Livermore Reads, together with some phenomenal poets of color. I'm working with the Commission for the Arts to create a website to give Livermore a better way to promote literary events and highlight local writers. In April, virtual Verse and Vine, a year late, but nonetheless will launch during National Poetry Month, and I'll be working with Las Pecitas College on a virtual literary arts festival in May. Since I haven't been writing poems for civic events, I challenged myself to write as many pandemic poems as I could. I have nine finished poems with a few more underway. The first poem, which I wrote in March, was published in Migozine, an online journal. These poems form the bulk of the reading that I gave back in September, and I'm hoping to use them along with the work of other poets for an acrostic event later this year. It has been a rough period with a steep learning curve, and there are still many writers, most of them older, who are no longer attending literary events due to technology barriers. I've hosted Zoom practice sessions to help them master video conferencing, but many insist that they will simply wait it out. On the flip side, we have attracted new people who enjoy being able to participate in literary events from their home. Livermore Shakes and I are discussing how we can cross-promote our events. I and other poets laureate throughout the Bay Area are inventing new ways to share literary arts in a virtual setting. So all things considered, I think the Livermore Poet Laureate Program did remarkably well under some very challenging circumstances. My infamous spreadsheet unfortunately crashed and died last year during a software upgrade, but I do have a summary of my updated stats, so since I was installed as poet laureate, I have written thirty-one poems for civic events and public art installations, plus an additional eight pandemic poems, hosted fifty-two open mics in person and virtual, prepared and distributed in a monthly literary arts newsletter, coordinated twenty-five Teen Poet of the Month contests, we finally have all four high schools involved, coordinated three soon-to-be-four science poetry contests with awards, with an award ceremony and reading, hosted two poetry corners at the School District Science Odyssey in 2019 and 2020, gave five readings at the Livermore Civic Center Library, topics included autism, social justice, and the pandemic, and attended seven additional literary events at the library, coordinated and hosted eight quarterly poetry at Ravenswood Events with some phenomenal poets, including many women and poets of color, curated and performed three cowboy poetry events at Hagaman Ranch, served as poetry judge at the Alameda County Fair for two years, hosted two poetry days at the fair, recruited artists with Angie and Cola of the Bothwell Center, as well as nine poets for the Worth a Thousand Word exhibit that was held at the Bankhead Theater from October 2019 to January 2020. And I also curated a related exhibit that displayed all of the Teen Poet of the Month winners and honorable mentions for the previous academic year. Participated in the Poets Laureate on Social Justice Tour in fall of 2019, giving readings throughout Northern California focused on social justice issues. Assisted Carly Weedmeyer, a fabulous English teacher at Del Valle High School with an elective poetry class that also served as remedial reading and writing. The class was a pilot project to see if we could get students interested in the state and national poetry out loud competition, we weren't successful in that, but we did. There were ten underserved students in the class who learned how to read, analyze, deliver, and most importantly, enjoy a variety of challenging poems. Let's see, lastly, I attended the Historic Gathering of Poets Laureates of California in October 2018, attended a similar Bay Area event the year later, and twice have attended the statewide Creativity for Change Symposium hosted by California poets in the schools. So that's sort of a summary of everything I've been doing since I started. Any questions?
Oh, I would just like to say that's an incredibly impressive list of everything you've been doing, and thank you so much for persevering in these really challenging times, so unbelievable. You know, I'm listening and thinking it would be fantastic if all of the people that we have give us annual reports were this productive, incredible, so thank you so much. I see several hands raised for the patriots here, so I'll start with Vice Mayor Monroe.
I just want to echo that. Last year, I remember hearing your report and thinking it was truly impressive, the work that you've done. This year, I think it's even more so particularly given the circumstances that we find ourselves in. I just, just keep on keeping on, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Kik?
This time last year, I was at a city event, and you were reading a poem as we were unveiling something, and I never ever would have imagined that I'd be then sitting here, listening to you give the report, but I was really happy because at that moment, listening to your poetry, my daughter was super into poetry for about five minutes after we left that event, listening to you. And so I'll be happy to let her know that you are still keeping on, keeping on, doing poetry. She's now six instead of five, so just hello from, from a long time ago.
She can participate in the science poetry contest, it starts on February twenty fifth.
It's open to all ages?
All ages, all school, we have four divisions, so she'll be in the K through, K through five. So there's K through five, middle school, high school, and then adult. So we actually have more children, but, you know, kids at the various levels participating now than adults. So it started out as a mostly adult contest, but yeah, it's gotten very competitive with the kids, so please have her submit.
We absolutely will, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, really appreciate everything you do there, quite impressive. So, yep, great. Okay, now we're on to item three dot O, Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda, and with, in conformance with the Brown Act, the city council can take no action on them, but we will be listening to what is being said. So the, now with this, could the city clerk repeat how the citizens can participate in this Citizens Forum?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, tonight we are using the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine of calling in when the public comment period opens. Each participant's name will be announced, and then their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record.
Okay, with that, the city clerk, will you manage the citizens forum process, please?
The first speaker we have is Emily Ramey, and she will be followed by Carrie Olds. Ms. Ramey, you've been enabled to speak if you want to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, members of council, mayor, and members of the public, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I represent Y Green Energy Fund, we are a leading PACE finance company, and Y Green is the word energy spelled backwards. PACE financing is a way for property owners to leverage the equity in their properties to make disaster preparedness, resiliency improvements that help improve comfort, safety, and value of their homes and commercial properties. PACE has been around for over a decade, it's a very well-tested and proven policy measure that the legislature passed ten years ago, and which our company has implemented a very successful program. We offer both residential and commercial financing, and generally, our projects include making energy-efficient upgrades to homes and businesses, so HVAC replacements, window replacements, ducting and ceiling work, whole building envelope work for commercial properties, as well as renewable energy, so solar and battery storage, water conservation, seismic retrofitting, electric vehicle charging, and most recently, fire resiliency improvement. So PACE is really a public policy initiative that enables cities and counties throughout the state to meet their climate action plan and economic development goals. As of course, PACE enables local job creation through the trades and helps contractors grow their businesses. So it has a sort of dual purpose, and our company is just one of a few providers that offers this program. Now, Livermore already has another PACE program, you do not have a program that offers commercial financing for small and midsize business customers, and for that reason, I think it's really important that you strongly consider looking into our program and helping us get on an upcoming agenda for consideration. I have worked with some staff, sort of on back and forth between a few offices now over the last eighteen months, and given COVID, I'm super sensitive to bandwidth constraints of staff, but you can consider our program with the very simple passing of a template set of resolutions and staff report, which I've provided to folks in a few different departments, both the building and the Office of Innovation. You've also recently heard from some of our commercial contractors, Jeff Carr from Solar Technologies spoke recently at a public comment, and Rob Lampkin from Cool Earth Solar also called and spoke directly to the chief building official to try to promote the consideration of our leading PACE finance company. So I strongly urge the city manager to take action and direct staff to help review our program, and I really hope we are able to come to city council very soon for consideration to add more choice and better competition to your existing menu of PACE options for Livermore, thank you so much.
The next speaker is Carrie Olds, followed by Ann Kit Pan Chao, followed by Charlie. Carrie, we've enabled you to speak.
Hi, my name is Carrie Olds, I am the program manager for the Mills on Wheels program with Spectrum Community Services. I am coming tonight to speak to you about our continued need for volunteers. As you can anticipate, going through COVID, we have had to change what we do in order to continue to serve the homebound seniors. I currently run forty-five volunteers a week to run the forty-five routes here in Livermore. With your support, with the city support, with the community support, we were able to grant the wishes of one hundred and sixty-five seniors for Christmas, and it's something that I could not have done without the dedication and support of the community. Many youth groups participated in this, as well as Unchained Labs. We were able to provide cards for the seniors to give out to their own family and friends, we were able to gift them with small gifts throughout the month of December, but as you can imagine, as we continue through this crisis, we still have seniors at home that have been at home since last March. And if you have the time or the inclination, if you would write cards for my seniors so that my volunteers can get those out to seniors, that would be greatly appreciated. If you have time on your hand and you would like to come and volunteer with us, you can reach us at M O W at spectrum C S dot org. You can also reach me directly, my name is Carrie Olds, I am the program manager, however, I do all of the volunteer intake, and you can reach me at nine two five four eight three one nine eight nine. And we are going into March, although we have not figured out how we're going to do it this year. We do have March for Mills coming up, which is an annual event. In the past, we have asked the mayors and city council members to come and take a ride with us and see what it is that we do, unfortunately, we will not be doing that this year. Once I do figure out how we are going to participate in March for Mills, I'll be happy to get that information out to you, but again, it's just critical that we keep in mind that our seniors have been at home and isolated, even more so than they were in the past, and it's only with the continued support of the cities and the communities that we are able to continue to serve, and we really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ann Kit Pan Chao, and followed by Charlie. Ann Kit, you've been enabled to speak, please unmute yourself.
Hi, councilmembers, my name is Ann Kit Pan Chao, calling from three sixty-five hospitality. I'm on this call today to advocate on behalf of, not on behalf, but advocate in regards to Y Green Energy Fund. I'm in hospitality industry and own and manage several hotels in the area, East Bay, got properties in Contra Costa County, Yolo County, Solana County, and we have used Y Green as our resource at several of our hotels for our projects to do capital improvement. You know, we're in California, tree huggers, and you know, we're trying to make sure our hotels and our properties are as green as possible, and Y Green, you know, is a great resource and tool for us to come in and do capital investment, and that capital investment not just helps us in conserving energy, we save money, and with that money we save, we, you know, reinvest, and that reinvestment gets us, we create more jobs, so it's a win-win for everyone, you know, and we've been, we've been saving, you know, decent amount of, of energy along with, you know, all the capital investment, and Y Green has been a very great program, you know, from their sales to all the way to getting funding And Y Green has been a very great program, you know, from their sales to all the way to getting funding and all of that has, has been, has been very easy and great people to work with. Along with that, you know, with crises like what we are going through right now, hotel industry has been impacted the most. And I feel for my properties, at least I had a backup from Y Green, which helped me out tremendously. And I would, I would really consider for City of Livermore to have them approved. Because you know, in near future, what we look at is when we buy properties, we want to make sure we have a second set of capital stack which would come in. So, for example, if we get a property which is not in the best shape or not the greenest of it, then we have a chance to do it with the help of Y Greens. Every time we go out and look for hotels or look for other properties, we look for, you know, we look for pace financing. And you know, I think Y Green, we, we have had fantastic experience. You know, we've done solars at hotels. We have, we just completed a project in West Sacramento where we have done curb-to-counter renovation. We've got, you know, new windows, new doors. And we went from two-star hotel to three-and-a-half-star hotel, and we have created ten more jobs. We added ten more jobs. So it's, it's a win-win for local employment as well as, you know, bringing up a property to a good standard in the neighborhood. So I would highly recommend for Y Green to be approved in City of Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Charlie. Charlie, I'm enabling you to speak. Please unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, good. Good. My name is Charlie, and I own a construction company, which we specialize in solar roofing and batteries. And let me tell you, this is, I'm dealing with green footprints. And the people that I have approached, the only thing that is lacking is funding. Funding in a way that they can utilize to upgrade their homes, improve the property values. And Y Green has played a vital role in my business. I have done hotels, industries, getting cash flows, improving their, their, the, the, the overall green impact. The green revolution impact. I've seen it in many cities. And I tell you, I need Y Green as a contractor. And to make it easier for customers, clients, to offer them a service that can upgrade the, the energy efficiencies of the biggest investment of their lives. I highly, highly recommend Y Green to be part of the City of Livermore, please. That's, that's all I have to say. I mean, I need Y Green in Livermore for people to come and join us. I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
And that was the last speaker for public comment.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public forum. I would want to, at this point, just ask staff, with respect to something like Meals on Wheels, to what extent do we help publicize their need for volunteers on our website? Is, is, are there links?
We can certainly link with our partners back out to their programs. And Meals for Wheels is one of our partners. So we can work with them to link back to their websites and put some content there so that there is a connection.
Okay, thank you. Does any other council member have a question for staff at this point? Okay, with that, close the public forum. And we'll move on to the consent calendar. And a couple of things I want to mention at this point. First of all, we're running this meeting with fewer tiles so that we can see each other better on, on the council. And what that might mean is that as we ask somebody from staff to weigh in on a question, there may be a slight delay as we bring them into the meeting and out, but ask everybody to bear with us as we experiment with this. And then the other thing I'd want to mention is that item four point four regarding the Royal Road Path Project is being pulled from the agenda and will return at the next meeting. So with that, I'd like to find out if there's any member of the public would like to speak on the consent calendar?
Mayor, we have no speakers raising their hand.
Okay, and with that, I'd like to close the public comment on the consent calendar. And at this point, does anybody, oh, I see that council member Kick has her hand up. Go ahead, please.
Before we move a motion on the consent calendar, I wanted to clarify, I believe it's item. Sorry, this is long. Four point seven. Four point seven to reserve the property located at thirty-five seventy-five Pacific Avenue. Mark Roberts, can you clarify that this is simply a reservation for a project? None of the ideas in the project are being approved at this time.
Good evening, council member, members of the council. My name is Mark Roberts. I am your city manager. And the item before you on four point seven is response to a city council matters initiated. The question asked by the council was, would this space ultimately be needed for governmental use? Or could we consider essentially making it available to other entities? In other words, that we wouldn't need it for governmental use. The study that was completed was hypothetical in nature and was a needs study moving forward. And the conclusion of that is, it is potentially likely that we will need this space for future expansion of governmental uses. However, the individual projects that were listed in that needs assessment would be subject to further review by the city council. Any of those individual projects, you noted there was a whole collection of them, would need to be approved by the council, first as a part of your capital improvement program, and then as individual projects when they go out to bid. So this is not at all in any way approving any of those individual projects. It is noting it's a needs study, and so over time, we do expect to use the land, and we do expect to bring items back to you for individual consideration.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, if there are no other comments, do I have a motion?
I'd move approval.
Okay.
Second consent calendar.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, second.
Oh, you have a second. So it was moved in second on the consent calendar. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Or I guess any other discussion on this? Don't see any. Council member Kick, you have your hand up, but okay, so with that, do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. With that, the motion consent calendar passes unanimously. We have no public hearings this evening, so now we're on to matters for consideration. Six dot one is the oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID nineteen emergency. So with that, Mr. Roberts, could you proceed?
Yes, I can. Let me see what I can do here on a share screen. Let's take a quick look here. And do you see my screen?
We can.
Very good. All right, with that. All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor. I am your Director of Emergency Services, Mark Roberts. And this report will give us an update on what's been going on over the, the past few months of our current disaster. Most notably, and the really very good news that you see is that our seven-day rolling average of daily new COVID cases, both within the county and within Livermore, are dropping dramatically from a low in November of under six cases per hundred thousand per day to a high in mid-December, in January, in mid-December in Livermore of sixty-four new cases per day. We are now back down to just over twelve cases per day. And so that's a dramatic improvement. And you can see all the way through January, our numbers, both in the county and the city, fell dramatically, and that is continuing into February. So that is, that's the big news here, that things are getting dramatically better. Now, of course, your staff is all very much hoping that nobody got together on Super Bowl Sunday with people they shouldn't and shared COVID germs. So we are hoping that we do not get a bump. As we got, you can see the first bump there was Thanksgiving, and the second bump right there was Christmas. And so kind of like clockwork, if we, if we did have a bunch of gatherings over the weekend, we will see a bump. So we're hopeful that this trend will continue and is very good news for us overall. You'll remember that the last time I gave the update, the state of California had, had just lifted the regional stay-at-home order. And we returned to the purple tier. And you'll remember that the purple tier is the most restrictive of the four tiers in the framework that the state has. And what seemed like a standard of fewer than seven cases per hundred thousand just a month ago seemed like an unattainable number. But now, as we are at twelve, it seems like we are within distance where we could actually see a potential at some point in the future of returning to the red zone. The number not only has to be below seven cases per hundred thousand, it has to actually be there for a period of time before we're able to move into the red zone. So we're looking forward to that. And of course, the trigger is at the county level. And on the diagram in front of you, that's the blue line. The county is right now just a little bit above us. And they're still about fifteen or so, sixteen. So you can see our cumulative cases at three thousand eight hundred and forty-six, and our seven-day rolling average is just a hair over twelve. You'll see there are the standards for purple, red, orange, and yellow on the tiers. And you'll see that our, at Alameda County, our overall testing positivity rate already meets the standard for tier two. And our lowest quartile test positivity rate is just a hair over. So we are very much within shooting distance. And of course, the, this data here is not the same as the data on the previous screen. And so if you've ever gone into the various websites at the state and the county, you'll note, have to be very careful with the timeframe that you're looking at. So you can see here, this timeframe is from January twenty-third, and you can see the difference just between January twenty-third and February sixth, all heading in a very positive direction. We of course have the two major testing sites here in the Tri Valley. One at Stanford Healthcare Valley Care, and that's the Alameda County Fairgrounds. We've had almost thirty thousand COVID tested, completed since it came online in April of twenty twenty. The City Health Urgent Care is located at Los Pecidos College in the parking lot P. And they have had over seven hundred tests completed since they came online in January twenty-second. So if what has been keeping you from getting a COVID test is the drive out to the fairgrounds, there's a much closer location right here in Livermore where you can do drive-up tests. The county's website has been modified to now track vaccine or vaccinations. So you can see here on the circle in the diagram there, that as of the date that this was taken, which was a little bit earlier today, Livermore had completed six thousand eight hundred and twenty-three vaccinations of residents who live. These are people who live within the city of Livermore, not necessarily those who work or travel through Livermore, have first shots and second doses at one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three. Big round numbers, that's just over seven percent of our population. It's been first dose inoculated. Not as quickly as I know many of us would have hoped, but very good overall making progress and continuing to make progress throughout the county. The city is continuing to partner with our local governmental partners and the county on setting up a local vaccination site. So we have two major focuses. One is a local vaccination site, which will be located at the Robert Livermore Community Center. The school district, the park district, and the city of Livermore are partnering to bring that online with the county. We have done the initial layout. The school district has brought the super cold freezers necessary to deal with the Pfizer vaccine, which isn't unusual for a field vaccination center. So we're very excited about being able to offer that. And those things brought online, we've continued our planning on that. And we are working with the county now to obtain the vaccine supply. Of course, everywhere, vaccine supplies are relatively limited. But this site will be able to be up and running just as soon as there is vaccine available. We are hoping that that happens before the end of February. We continue to work very closely with our county representatives and county health, and of course, our supervisor as well to move forward. The second item that we are working on as your staff is, we are partnering with the cities of Dublin, Pleasanton, and the county of Alameda, as well as Stanford Valley Healthcare on the vaccination center that will be at the fairgrounds. So we continue to make progress there. That process is moving along very well. And the final opening date for that has not been set, but it could be as soon as late next week. So we are crossing our fingers that everything falls into place there. All of the logistics are in place. Of course, Stanford Valley Care, of course, is our partner for the testing site at the fairgrounds. So we have a lot of faith in their ability to pull that off logistically and are looking forward to that. You've also heard likely on the news that the Coliseum Test Site has been taken over by FEMA. And that actually is a very positive step for us, because that brings, that's another source of vaccine being brought into Alameda County. So that isn't out of the total that the county gets. That's in addition too. So those are, that's a complete net gain for everybody throughout the county when the federal government is involved in that site. So we're very excited about the fact that that's come, going to be up and running, because that actually is in a neighborhood that is particularly hard hit in the county. But in addition to that, it makes more vaccine available to the whole rest of the county. We continue to be in the phase one B. We just actually just entered phase one B from one A. And that actually, for your city staff, means that our police department employees can be vaccinated as a part of that group. You remember your fire department employees were vaccinated as a part of phase one A. The rest of your city staff will be with the general population currently. So the state has modified our vaccination plan so that it becomes age-based, although they are tinkering with some modifications for pre-existing conditions and susceptible communities. So we do expect some continuing adjustments as that moves forward, and we will keep you posted both on our progress of vaccinating our staff and progress of vaccinating our overall community. Of course, our local pod or point of distribution at Robert Livermore is meant to primarily service those without a health, primary healthcare provider. Because if you do have a primary healthcare provider, we continue to recommend that you work with them to get a direct supply of the vaccine, and you very well might be able to be served sooner than going through the other pods. But progress across the board, both at the county site, at the fairgrounds, our local pod here in Livermore, and we hope by the next time we're back in front of you that the both of them are up and running, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Wanted to report some particularly good news, that our e-Gift program that you recently approved is up and running. If you have not been on the gift livermore.com website, I encourage everybody who is listening to me to go on there. That, of course, is your ticket to get into our e-Gift program. Buying a forty-dollar gift certificate to one of sixty-four participating businesses in Livermore will get you a fifteen-dollar bonus. And buying a seventy-five-dollar gift certificate gets you a twenty-five-dollar bonus. The program was launched Sunday, February seventh. Yes, that's yesterday. And as of a little earlier in the day today, there's been more than twenty-three thousand dollars worth of gift certificates purchased. So we are super excited about that and how successful we have been. You are limited on your bonus to one gift certificate per business, but you could buy a gift certificate in every single one of those sixty-two businesses and get a bonus. So we certainly encourage you. So uh we certainly encourage you, um if you are interested in supporting any of our local businesses to check that out. Um, it's not just businesses in downtown, although we have a lot of our wonderful downtown businesses who are strongly represented in that program. Businesses, uh small businesses from throughout the community. Um, as well as uh in a partnership um with supervisor Halbert's office. Um, we've extended this to businesses outside the city of Livermore in our wine country. So you'll see a lot of the popular wineries that you know and love are participating in the program. Another way to s- to support those businesses. Um, so uh Livermore Downtown Incorporated uh and the city continue our outreach effort to attract more small businesses. So if somebody hasn't heard of this, uh certainly put it out there. All of the uh fees of this program are being uh paid for by the city of Livermore. So as a participant in the program or a business in the program, um you don't have to pay those administration fees, um which goes to uh to uh the provider of the service. Um, and the other thing is we are also uh through LDI, helping with technical support for any of the businesses that need uh that technical support to become part of the program. So very excited about all of those items and with that, I'll open it up to questions. Honorable mayor, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm inclined to um find out first, before we go into this in detail, do we have any public uh comment on this item? I, I didn't hear, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay, thanks. I'd open and close the public comment on this item. And then with that, I'll go back to the council. I see a council member Kick has her hand raised first.
Yeah, um, when is the last date for businesses to sign up to participate?
We have not set a hard deadline um for people uh on the far side, but we would encourage anybody who hasn't even an inkling of thinking about participating to do it now. Um, the city did satisfy a specified amount of dollars, as did the county um for businesses outside the city of Livermore. Um, and it is a first come, first served. Um, so you saw by, um, of course, you know, our dollar participation uh is related to the bonus dollars. And the number I gave you a little earlier was included, the entire gift certificate number. Um, so we still have significant amount of dollars available, uh but I would very much encourage very soon. Um, because while the program will continue on indefinitely, the, the bonus will not.
Okay, great.
Okay, council member Banana?
Yeah, I was also interested in whether businesses could continue to sign up for the program. So that question was answered and i- is, is there the possibility if this program is as successful as it sounds like it is so early on? Is it, is there a possibility that it could be reseeded with new, with new funds? I wasn't part of the original uh approval of this, so I'm just wondering if that was ever discussed.
So the council uh has several times taken a look at it, oh, its overall incentive program and redirected funds both within the program. And of course, you do have the ability to add additional funds. Um, you know, these are uh calls on your city's general fund. Um, so that is one of the items that uh as we bring back, you, you collectively asked for a report back. Um, and we would be bringing that back uh essentially a month from now. Um, on how all of the various parts of your program are, are doing. Um, and with recommendations, uh if adjustments are appropriate at that point. But so that was a really long way to say, yes, uh you can take a look at this in the future and see whether adjustments are necessary.
What, what, is there any, any knowledge about whether the county would possibly add some additional funds? Which is what made this so, part of what made this so attractive?
Um, yeah, this particular one, the two programs are running in parallel to each other. So in other words, the county dollars are going to county businesses, the city dollars are going to city businesses. Um, and we'll be monitoring both sides to sort of see um how both of those sides are doing. And can uh certainly uh continue to coordinate with the supervisor's office on that.
Thank you.
Okay, council member Carling?
Thank you. First, uh I'm very impressed with the uh amount of gift certificates that have already been purchased. Uh, but my, my real uh question is around the criteria for both the Robert Livermore. Uh, facility providing the vaccine and partnering with Pleasanton and Dublin for fairgrounds. I was on the call with the Alameda County Health Department uh last week. And I was a little, I guess, concerned about the, the, the numbers. I mean, they, she gave a number of the county getting ten to fifteen thousand doses of vaccine a week. And the county has over three hundred thousand people in the one B category. So you can, if you do the math, you can see how long that's gonna take just to do one B. They also admitted to your point earlier, and just to be clear to everybody, that the FEMA program at Coliseum is um not part of that ten to fifteen K a week. Because Coliseum's gonna get five to six thousand doses a day. So my question, I, what I'm getting around to is, how is the city gonna divvy up? I'm sure you don't have the answer to this, but how do you, how are they gonna divvy up the ten to fifteen thousand doses a week? To the various locations throughout the county, including Robert Livermore and at the fairgrounds?
You, you've identified sort of our key stumbling block here, which is actually vaccine supply. Um, so the thing that we wanted to make sure as your staff, both here in the city of Livermore and throughout the Tri-Valley. Is that we were not the constraint logistically, that the, that the holdup wasn't because we didn't have a freezer or a building or a plan. Or the software or the computers necessary to open a testing site. Um, so uh what we have heard from the county is both those numbers that they gave. Um, and uh the belief uh that those numbers will continue to slowly increase week by week. That each week they expect to get just a little bit more. Um, and that over the coming months, they expect to get a significantly faster supply. Now, I do want to be clear that those numbers are exclusive of two important groups. One you mentioned, which was those going into the Coliseum. And the others are essentially called multi-county healthcare providers. And so Kaiser and Sutter's numbers do not come out of that same uh group of, uh so that's one of the reasons. For those who have access to that, we do very much recommend that you actually go to your healthcare provider because that's a separate grouping. And so um there are essentially three different ways that we pump vaccine into the county. One is through the multi-county healthcare providers, the second through the county itself, and the third is through the federal government and FEMA in the site at the Coliseum. Um, and then the next thing you're gonna ask me is, how many doses all of those add up to? And I don't have that one, but we will by the next time we're back in front of you. But it is a significant number, um in some cases, uh while not quite as large as the overall county number, it is a significant number.
Well, that helps because the, on Wednesday, it was not clear and she did not mention that Kaiser and Sutter and I assume uh Stanford. Have separate supplies over and above the ten to fifteen thousand a week that she talked about.
Is it? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
So um first of all, I really appreciate the conversation around vaccines. Um, understanding where we are going forward. The one other thing I mentioned about that though is we don't know what rate they're gonna be, continue to be produced. My hope would be that that's gonna ramp up as we go forward into spring and summer. Um, I also wanted to compliment the uh slides, the um PowerPoint. It really helps in making this clear uh to me at least going forward. Um, I wanted to ask a question about uh our numbers. Uh, one of the things, having the picture the, of the um, the, 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 the graph of the number, of the chart going up and the chart coming down. Is it really made it clear what gatherings do? Um, so I'm not sure that we can affect much more change than we already have in behavior. But it is clear that when the behavior does not match what it's supposed to be, we actually find out about it two weeks later in a, a pretty chart. So I really hope people do not gather for their Super Bowl and Valentine's Day is coming up. I would suggest people pay attention to that as well. Um, I did go on to the E, uh to the um gift livermore.com site today. Um, it is very easy to use, very well set up. My only problem was trying to decide which of the many sources to give my money to. But um based on what you've said, uh city manager Roberts, um I think, can we just take a quick break? We can all go, get, come back five minutes, five? I don't think I need more than five minutes. So I'll, I'll just go get my gift Livermore stuff right now, come right back, right?
Perhaps right after the meeting, ma'am.
That could work too, but it, it was very well done. I really want to compliment everyone on how that was done. And um to point out that this is a really good example of how businesses, residents, and government all can work together to make this better. So.
Okay, thank you. I've um, I appreciate the report. Uh, and there is, you know, hope in mentioning all the different sites and some vague number of how much vaccines they're gonna get. But I have to tell you, uh just myself and talking to um friends and acquaintances. That there's a lot of frustration in not being clear as to what to do. So we, you, you just mentioned there were three channels that we could get it. And if uh, you know, if you've got your healthcare provider, go there. But the healthcare provider we've got basically sent a message that says, don't call us, we'll call you. In the meantime, here's a bucket of sand and a hammer. So I don't um, you know, I just don't see it as um, uh it's one thing to have the facilities. But what the state does not have is any consistent plan and communication as to what people should do. And I'm frankly seeing people saying, you know, talking to each other, should I go there or there? You share me your phone number, your website. People are scrambling all over the place. They're seeing uh inconsistent delivery of this. There are people uh, you know, much younger that are getting the vaccine and, but they're not in any special category. People are uh calling up and uh when they're asked, well, are you in the category? Have you been given a letter? They're saying yes, and then they get a vaccine. So frankly, what's going on, I think, is really bad. In terms of uh behavior of people, because I see people uh faking the system out in order to get it. People are desperate for it. And so uh with my, that little speech there, is there anything we can do? To help people understand what it is and how to sign up for one of these vaccines? And to have some assurance that they will, in fact, get it in an orderly manner? Because frankly, at the moment, I see no assurance of that. I see a lot of conversation about, well, we're gonna do this or that. But there is no consistent messaging that I see for what people should really do. To uh help them be assured that they will get this in a timely manner. So I, if, do you have any comment with respect to that, uh city manager?
You are correct that the information on priorities uh and the channels from which that we can get the vaccine have changed multiple times over the past month and a half. Uh, as this rollout has happened. So um certainly far from ideal on that. But the, the, the basic themes of um checking with your healthcare provider, it is still likely to be the fastest way, even if it's not as fast as that you would hope. Um, and essentially, uh if you are in one of the groups that where uh you are eligible. Um, when the other sites are up and running, whether it be Coliseum, Alameda County uh uh fairgrounds or our local pod. Um, uh folks will be allowed to go to those spaces, but all of them will have uh some form of a uh appointment system. Um, and there'll be information and they're both, there is information and we'll continue to update that information on our website. Um, so that people have the latest information. But honorable mayor, you are correct, the information has changed over time. Um, and there certainly have been reports of people not playing by the rules. Um, for those that we are involved in directly, um there is a requirement to uh show documentation that you are who you say you are and that you are in the category. Um, age is done by the standard way we would, but I guess I've never thought of an old person getting a fake ID um so they could get a vaccine. It's been a long time since I've been to my, you know, favorite fake ID provider. But I guess uh hopefully we are not down to that point um of people trying to game the system. And then finally, to remember that even after you have the first dose and then the second dose. Um, while it is an amazing amount of protection, it is not magical. Um, and of course, the, the thing that protects us all is to get a very high vaccination rate throughout the entire community. So a lot, seven percent uh first dose vaccination is an encouraging number in Livermore. We've got a long way to go before we can get back to, to normal. Because of course, that is the path to getting our businesses back open and the thing that your staff is very much focused on.
So here's what I would, uh thank you for that. Here's what I would suggest, that you've mentioned three different channels. And you know, that gives people hope. Could you, could we put on our website what the process is for each channel? And if it does not exist yet, could you put down who's responsible for detailing the way to get a uh, an appointment? And when they expect to actually clarify what's going on? At least that would help people know, yeah, these sites are coming online, but nobody's figured out yet how to get an appointment or what's gonna happen. But maybe someday they might. So I'm, I'm just really frustrated, obviously, the lack of clarity of what to do. And so I actually think that saying there are all these different channels without telling people how to avail themselves of it or when they might be able to. Maybe counterproductive. So let's at least on our website, give the true status of when these things are gonna be operational and how somebody can make use of it.
Absolutely, we can do that. And then as uh as information changes, for example, when the uh uh county health site comes uh up online at the fairgrounds. Um, we can also push some of that information out on social media as well. Um, so we can do both of those.
Yeah, and I, I just see a lot of people getting anxious. And, and it's, you know, we're just gonna have to, as council member Carling pointed out, the supply is limited, it's going to be a while. And to the extent we can continue to hang in there, that's what we have to do. So I see uh council member Kick wants to say something.
Oh yeah, just uh while we're talking about the website, I had written down and forgot. Um, on the Livermore website, we have a news announcement about gift livermore.com, but it's not a link. It asks you to go to gift livermore.com. We could just create that hyperlink, just make it one click easier for everybody. Um, that might be helpful.
And that actually was uh that way because they weren't live until uh yesterday, so we will go in and adjust that.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, with that, any other uh comments, questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll uh close this item and move on to uh six dot two, discussion and direction of the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. And uh is there a, um, we have the staff report, please?
Yes, honorable mayor, it's Mark Robertson, city manager. And our deputy city manager, Christine Martin, will be imported into our group here and will be able to give the presentation.
Christine Martin, I am enabling you to speak.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh good evening. I am Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And I'm here to give an update on the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. As you know, last summer, the council created the Subcommittee. Um, and in the Subcommittee's initial um scope of work uh and homework that they did, based on community feedback they received. The Subcommittee broadened its scope beyond looking at the city police department's use of force policies. And all city policies and practices for incidences of structural discrimination. To include a, a broader examination of areas such as housing, transportation, youth, and community culture. As a part of the Subcommittee, the council authorized what was originally going to be an eighteen-member working group to provide information to the Subcommittee. Due to the overwhelming response, all forty-eight community members who applied to be a part of the group were accepted. The Subcommittee, with assistance from the Public Dialogue Consortium, has been receiving information from the working group to accomplish the Subcommittee's objective. Which is to develop a recommendation to the council to foster equity and inclusion in Livermore. Through diverse community engagement that will result in a welcoming city exemplified by equity and opportunity and just treatment for all. The working group members self-selected into four subgroups. And those are uh community culture and representations, policing and human services, reaching and inspiring younger generations. Policing and Human Services, Reaching and Inspiring Younger Generations, and the last group, Housing, Workplace Economics and Transportation Environments. Each of the subgroups met three times, developing a mission and identifying a project. These missions and projects are outlined in the attachment to this evening's staff report. Additionally, a subset of the subgroup B, Policing and Human Services, met several times with the consultant and staff from the Police Department, City Manager's Office and City Attorney's Office to review the Police Department's use of force policies against the eight can't wait organization recommendations. This group has concluded its work and will be sharing the results with the Subcommittee early in the next phase. A second subset of the policing subgroup will be meeting over the coming months to review the Police Department's stop data with the help of a consultant who specializes in this area. This group will provide updates to the Subcommittee as appropriate. On December 9th, the Subcommittee, including the entire working group, was invited to culminate the first phase of work with an interactive workshop entitled, Sharing Our Stories So We Can Have The Difficult Conversations. The workshop provided tools and techniques using connection and sharing of stories to have difficult conversations and dialogue with others. In January, council directed staff to reopen the application period through January 22nd for additional people to join the working group to provide information to the Subcommittee. Fifteen applications were received. So what is next for the Subcommittee? Staff will prepare a work plan for the next phase that will include an orientation meeting for the new applicants and a workshop for the entire working group to introduce new members and set the schedule moving forward and to review lessons learned from Phase One. The four existing subgroups will continue to meet and bring their projects to completion by the Subcommittee's June 21st sunset date. Additional areas of focus for the coming months may include the working group providing information to the Subcommittee on areas for change or improvement within the city organization so that city, the city can set an example for the community with welcoming and inclusive practices and policies. Another area for focus could be on the ways for the city to foster and build deeper relationships with all members of the community, especially those who traditionally do not share their feedback with us. The Subcommittee has a sunset date of June 21st, 2021, this year. The City Council will receive a report on the Subcommittee's work at their June 21st meeting. And this concludes staff's update this evening. And we are available for questions and any feedback that you have. Thank you.
Okay, and before we go to the council, again, I'd like to, do we have any public comment on this item?
Can we have, there's one additional piece I'd like to add in before we go to public comment? If we could do that, please. Christine, could you mention the, what the work projects of the other three groups you discussed, the Policing and Human Services? Could you also mention what the projects of the other subgroups were working on?
Yes, broadly, I can, I can give broad details. I think there might be a little bit more in the staff report attachment. The Community Cultures and Representations Group is probably the least defined project area at this time, but we have some ideas for them moving forward that we'll be sharing once we reconvene. But they are looking at examples in the community of ways that are welcoming and inclusive and, and how we can expand upon those. The youth generation, reaching the younger generations group is looking at engaging with the school district and parks district on affinity groups and having dialogues with the youth as their project. And then the Housing and Transportation and Workplace Environments Group is looking at having a workshop for, for themselves to learn more about all of these very complicated issue areas and how they would like to become subject matter experts for themselves to be advocates in the community for more equity and inclusivity in these, in these subject areas. So for example, being able to be advocates for affordable housing for underrepresented groups and things of that nature. So they're looking to have some, probably a series of workshops on various topic areas to educate themselves and become advocates for the community. And that's just a brief overview. And they'll, you know, we will be working with them in the coming weeks to further refine these into more, more detail.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, no, we do not.
Oh, thank you. So I'll open and close the public comment on this item. Now I'll return it to the council for further questions and comments. Okay, Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, I just, this is my first time hearing anything about the group as a council member. And I just want to say that gratifying to see it moving along. And it sounds like we'll be getting further updates. And I saw in the staff report that if, if the work felt, if we felt as if the work should continue, we would be able to address that pass at sunset date if we thought some of this work should continue pass at sunset date in June, we would be able to address that at our Goals and Priority Setting Workshop in March. Is that, is that what I understood?
That's a great, great point. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Yes, we, we do anticipate bringing a white paper to your goal-setting workshop about equity and inclusion, focused, with a focus more on ways that the city organization can set an example and ways we can look at our own internal policies and practices and also how we interface with the community, how we are external facing policies and practices, such as our advisory bodies, things like that. We'll, we'll be addressing that in a white paper and, and you'll be able to take a look at those at your goal-setting.
Great, thank you for that. And I guess to follow up is about the projects. We will, we'll get a report project by project for each of the subgroups. Is that, and we'll get those before June 21st? I'm still a little unclear about how we, we get to periodically check in on the project, the various, the progress of the various groups.
We can take council feedback on that. We do anticipate bringing a few updates to the council, but that's, we usually leave that up to the Subcommittee itself to let us know when they'd like to do a report back or they're welcome to report back at any time.
Okay, yeah, I would just like to hear a little bit more specifically at the appropriate time, you know, what's coming out of the groups and, you know, more details about the projects and, and what we're learning, what we're learning and how we're feeding it back into our community. So appreciate the report and looking forward to hearing, hearing more going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to, so thanks to Councilmember Banano for that suggestion. That's a good one. I just wanted to mention that since I'm new to this group, replacing our honorable mayor, that Councilmember Vice Mayor and I have had conversations with city staff on a couple of different occasions. She and I had a long conversation again today about next steps and particularly around how we integrate these new people into the, the work, into the current group as well as sort of how advanced and far along each of the four working, sub-working groups are. To Vice Mayor's point, some are farther along than others. And we, Vice Mayor and I will be meeting with the facilitator tomorrow, along with city staff, to further the process here about implementing sort of the next steps, including the orientation for the, for the new folks as being one of the first things we need to do. But, you know, so I'm, I'm eager to get going. I thank Mayor Warner and Vice Mayor Monroe for the work that they've done so far. And I think we still have a fair amount of work to do. But I think we're off to a good start. And I think it sounds like we have some people that are very dedicated, very passionate about this. And I look forward to sort of focusing their energies in ways that can have meaningful impact on the city. And any other advice or questions that the other council members have tonight would certainly be welcome. I've made a note about continuing to provide feedback on projects, and that's a good one. But again, as the Vice Mayor pointed out, some of the projects aren't too well-formed just yet. So let's see how those work out over the next few weeks. So thanks for the time to, to speak.
Okay, Councilmember Kick.
So I had a couple of suggestions or questions about things that I would like to see in those white papers that I wanted to give feedback on. One of the things that I'm hoping that we can do is focus on how we can with policy, because especially our communications policy, it's sort of been focused on a lot, how that would like increase the feel of welcome in the community. So we will be getting a new website soon. And if we move, you know, as we're building out these policies, we're getting white papers on, on our communications policy, for example. How do we think about that? And how is it equitable? Are we going to be adding alt text, which is something you add to every image? So if you have a screen reader, that it will read it to you. Are we going to be making sure that any system we use can be properly translated? So when we're looking at equity and welcome there, I would like to see how we can implement those into actual policy so that everything we do in the city will be across the board equitable as much as it possibly can. Another thing that I'm hoping that we can focus on is the fact that we, you know, now we're doing Zoom meetings because it's the state of emergency. But as we move forward and we go back into the building, I know that there's some Brown Act stuff that will have to be worked on. But it looks like the state will probably be adjusting that if we can prioritize making city council meetings accessible to everybody, even if coming on a weeknight for three hours isn't possible for them. So those are just a couple of things that I'm hoping that can be detailed a little bit more in those white papers that I know are coming forward. So hopefully, we can see that. Also, as we get to the end of this period, I would love it if we could potentially hear from people that are in the group. I love hearing from Vice Mayor Monroe, and we will hear from Councilmember Carling. But I think it would be interesting if there were a few representatives from the group who wanted to share their feedback about how they felt the program went, since this is the first time we've done something like this.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
I, I have to say, I'm surprised there's no public comment. Really surprised. I wanted to, so first of all, thank you for the feedback. I wanted to follow up with the communication about the subgroups. I, I hope that part of what we do, we, we had a little kerfuffle, as you might remember, back in December. And I believe that if we can continue the conversation to ensure that we have clear communication going back and forth very regularly, which means monthly, if, if not more often, that, that, that would go a long way towards ensuring that we're able to go forward and make, make progress. I also want to make sure that we understand that the projects that the working groups are, are working on, some of the, some of them have resulted in real changes. Some of them are going to give us information going forward. In particular, I would hope that what we get from the culture group is some sense of the data that we need, you know, the, the data that we need to understand who we are as a city so that we can go forward. In terms of the, what I call vaguely the economics, the housing and the transportation, all the things that make life worth living, I hope that we are able to get communication around that and get some progress that we can, we can think of to work with people in the city. The city can't do everything. I'll go back to the Gift Livermore Project. Gift Livermore is an ideal example of how working together works in one way so it works better together. Maybe something along those lines can happen with housing or with, with economics in, in general. So as we go forward, I'm, I'm, I guess what, what I'm hoping that we do is understand that the working group will be giving us information so that we can then turn that into policy or partnership or both. To Councilmember Kick's point about members of the group speaking, there's a whole lot of them listening right now. So if we want to ask them, we could, but that would be out of process, so perhaps not. But, but there's, but, but we have, we have some listening to what's going forward. So yeah, that's, that's all I have for right now.
See, Councilmember Kick.
This was just popped into my head as you were speaking. Another thing that I'm wondering about, I know this isn't defined in any of the, sorry, defined in any of the subgroups. But when we look at leadership throughout the community, has there been any discussion or will there be, will there be any discussion on how we increase diversity in leadership? One of the things that a lot of cities are doing is going to district elections, which makes it much more affordable for new people like myself to run. Is that something that is going to be discussed? Or could it be discussed? How can we increase diversity in our election systems? Or any other leadership systems in the city?
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
I, I think that, that has not specifically been discussed as specifically discussed as you brought it up, but that would fit under this cultural, roughly under the culture group. And it has come up as being an issue. So yes, that would be, that could be one of the areas that we look at.
Okay, I don't see any other comments at the moment. I would like to thank Vice Mayor Monroe and now Councilmember Carling for stepping up on this project. And I'd also like to thank Christine Martin for really supporting all of this work and making it happen as well. And also to all the people that have participated in the working group and that have passion for making our city better. So I, I think we've got more work to do. I think none of us expected anything to happen overnight. But I do see that there's a lot of passion, energy to making it better eventually. And what I see is that there are some things that have a shorter term payoff and other things that are going to be much longer. And so as we do the white papers, as we, pointing that out, which, where we think we can get results sooner rather than later would be helpful to focus on, because that's where we started out. The other thing that I'm interested in seeing us address is structurally, how are we going to do this? Because at the moment, we have a homeless subgroup in the council. We've got communications focus area of a couple of council members. We have many advisory bodies that touch on all these topics. And so I would hope that within the next few months and with these white papers, we can come up with, how are we going to rationalize everything that we're doing? Because rather than have multiple entities working at cross purposes, I think fewer, more focused efforts would be helpful. But I don't know what the answer is. But if, but I would hope that that question could be answered in the next few months as well. I see Vice Mayor Monroe.
Right, so I, I think the structural question is very important. I actually had my hand up for another reason, which is that we keep talking about white papers. And I just realized that apparently I have been assimilated into, what is it, the word with the Borg or whatever? Because I know what a white paper is. But it might be a good idea for the people listening, if we could define what a white paper was and what its purpose is and where, how we, how we make this, why that matters with regard to this issue.
Honorable Vice Mayor, your City Manager, Mark Roberts. White paper is a term that your staff uses as we provide examples of items that the council could choose from for their goal setting. Council obviously can choose any goals that it wants and doesn't sort of need briefing on that to, to do that. But the practice during the past dozen years or so is when we go to goal setting, the staff uses the information that the council has directed us to work on. items that have been talked about by council as wanting to be worked on in the future, as well as things that are necessary either by legislation or other reason to be the basis of several areas where we write a several page document that would outline what a goal or a priority focused on a certain area. For example, one of your, one of your goal areas this last time has been asset management. And so that item was detailed. The council ultimately chose to choose that as one of its goals, and then a work program is created. So the white paper is one of those steps where your staff takes direction that the council has given to us and creates a menu of items for you to choose from as you're in your goal setting. Your goal setting this year is scheduled for March 1st. And it's at that time, the council will hopefully take a long list of potential goals and winnow that down to a nice short list of goals that you actually choose, and we bring back a work program on those items.
So just.
Mayor Monroe, you still have your hand up?
I do, I was going to pursue that a little bit. So the fact that this is on that list is an indication, I, I, I just want to make, make it clear that that we have a white paper coming means that this is a fairly important item that we are taking very seriously. Would that be a correct statement?
That's a correct statement. That is coming because of the council's focus on this, because of the creation of the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee that has raised issues during their meetings so far, and we expect them to continue to work on issues. So both the council direction on this, on the community's direction on this is being informing the work that we'll be doing as your staff.
So I have a question this, oh, there we go.
One, one more, one more just quick point. I should maybe just go back and forth for a second instead of keeping raising my hand. Just the idea that this is happening on March 1st. This would be a good opportunity for members of the public to pay attention to see how the goal setting takes place. And if this matters, make public comment.
Okay. Are you?
I'm done.
Okay. So I, a couple of things I want to point out is one that the goal setting doesn't specify exactly what we're going to do. It just says that this is an important area. So it isn't that some of these position papers on what is possible has to be done in the next week or two, but it will, I think it's in the June timeframe that we lock in on the budget. And that gets to the specificity. So we're going to be working on this for a few months. And the goal setting kicks off the process in which staff comes back with the actual things that we can do and the associated budget. So I would say, I see Councilmember Kick, yes.
I have a couple of other thoughts, just as I'm listening. One of them would be to clarify with City Attorney Jason Alcala, these, the advisory body meetings, those are not Brown Act. Are those Brown Act meetings or not Brown Act meetings?
So which, are you talking about the working group, Councilmember Kick?
No, all of the advisory bodies, so Airport Commission, Beautification, Community Asset Management.
Very good, so thank you. So yes, the advisory bodies that have been created by the city council that are listed in the city's municipal code, those are indeed legislative bodies. That means they have to follow the Brown Act, and they, each one has notice agendas before they can act. And the same rules that apply to you apply to them, that they cannot get together with a, with a quorum to discuss matters in their subject matter jurisdiction.
So they are, they are under the same regulation as we are, as the only reason they're doing Zoom meetings is because of the pandemic, and unless Brown Act changes, they can't continue to do that.
Correct, so there's the additional layer here, as we discussed in your rules of procedure at your last workshop, the legislative bodies in the state of California are able, by the Brown Act, to participate through remote access. You, however, as a city council, has indicated that you did not want to have that practice engaged in by your advisory bodies. You wanted to make sure that they were present and accounted for to conduct the city's business. That is not uncommon to the City of Livermore. Many cities actually engage in that practice, reserve the ability to participate remotely solely to the city council and then delegate on occasion, if necessary, to their advisory bodies, but many just keep it to themselves. Now, that being said, I am working with a group of individuals with the group called CalCities with the state legislators to develop modifications to the Brown Act. There's a variety of things that are coming forward with regard to that, one of which is imposing certain obligations on all legislative bodies. That would be your city council, as well as your advisory bodies, your planning commission, your arts commission, to allow them or require them to be able to participate via remote and to accept comments via remote. That would impose significant constraints upon the city and costs and resources that would need to be evaluated. And that's the conversation currently going on at the state legislature. Is that a question of statewide concern? Or are they comfortable leaving that to each individual city to determine whether it's appropriate for them to allow their advisory bodies to have that level of access?
I'm just thinking as we, as we move forward and we think about process and how do we do this? And how do we make the advisory process and city council more accessible to more people? If, if, as we're looking into that, if we're considering advisory bodies as being something that we have more conversation about, so people understand they can go to those meetings, they can make public comment at those meetings, and hopefully, remote access, even if it's the written ahead of time public comment, can be better understood by the public so that they can participate in the legislative process, even if we can't continue to do Zoom post COVID. Just generally, low income populations don't have easy nine to five where they're off on time necessarily for these meetings, which is why having some sort of remote access would be important.
Are you finished? Okay, I think with this, I don't see hands raised, so I want to ask, City Manager, did you have enough conversation from us as to how to effectively prepare these position papers?
Yes, I think we have a lot of guidance on our white papers. We have some guidance on the actual item on the agenda as well, which was very handy. And then, of course, we have your two subcommittee members, who will be a resource for us as we begin to move forward during this last phase of the Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Okay, with that, I think we'll close the, this item and move on now to the council committee reports and matters initiated. We'll start with Councilmember Kick.
Oh, yeah, that's me. Let's see, we did our rules and procedures. That was a long meeting. And then we participated in a Wheels meeting right after that. So I'm happy to report that I have now been appointed to officially by the Wheels Board, pointed to the Valley Link Board. So just again, focusing on alternative modes of transportation. I have had some pretty exciting conversations with very, very young people, high school students, who also really care about alternative modes of transportation. So seeing high schoolers want to have long Zoom meetings to talk about bike lanes and trains and all these other things has made me very happy. And I've, they've been able to connect with the smaller boards that they will probably likely now show up to and make public comment. So, so that's exciting. Not a whole lot else to report since the last time we met.
Okay, well, thank you. Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. On the January 27th, had a Stop Waste meeting. On the 28th, the League of California Cities meeting, and it was our annual legislative update, which was interesting hearing from our local Senator Glazer, as well as Rebecca Bauer-Kahen, our Assembly Member. On the first of February, as Councilmember Kick mentioned, we had a norms and values workshop. On the third of February, Vice Mayor and I interviewed, I think, five very, very enthusiastic and qualified candidates for one position for LAAC. I mean, ultimately, we made a decision, but all were very interested and enthusiastic about participating. Unfortunately, there was only one opening, but I think we talked to the, well, part of the interview process was the president of LAAC, high school senior, and, and she's willing, or she was enthused about including them in some of the committees, the people that weren't actually chosen for LAAC. So that's good. We have young people to, Councilmember Kick's point, that are very interested in participating in the city. On the third, as I mentioned earlier, I sub for the Vice Mayor, who was subbing for the Mayor on the, on the COVID discussion with the Alameda County Health folks. And then on the fifth, briefings on a couple of different topics. And I did want to ask one question that we got a email today. And I'm sorry I didn't bring it up during the discussion about vaccines, but we got a letter today regarding vaccines for the homeless. And I was just asked, inquiring of the city manager, is there any process to reach out to the, particularly the, I don't know whether they're in the hotel or in the encampment or elsewhere. Is there a way to reach out to the homeless to, for the vaccines?
So Councilmember Carling, yes, our service providers and partners are doing that. And those members of the homeless population who are in a special needs population, either by their age or condition, are being reached out to. In addition, the county is ramping up and is staffing a mobile vaccination sites to deal with those sorts of special needs populations. And the last piece of the puzzle is Robert Livermore, of course, is right across the street from a church where a lot of our homeless population get services on a weekly basis. And so one of the reasons it was chosen was for that, for that location. So we are hoping that between the county's effort of reaching out to people in the hotel programs and there are service providers reaching out to folks who are living, you know, in areas that are not the hotels, and essentially, because we'll ultimately have Robert Livermore up across the street from one of our providers, that one of those ways, we'll ultimately be able to get vaccinations to a high percentage of our homeless population.
Great, thank you very much. That's good information. Thank you.
Okay, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, thanks. I would like, if I could, to go a little farther on what Councilmember Carling just brought up. I was thinking, and I do apologize, I, we, we closed the public hearing on the item where, where Mr. Roberts was giving us an updating on the COVID vaccination process. So I would like to continue a thread here for just a second. The homeless was one population I was going to ask about, but we also have populations, elderly seniors, who don't get out a lot, they may not be very facile with the internet, and they may not be on a computer. They may not see people very often. I think there are potentially other parts of our community that might not readily have access to healthcare. And I, I'm concerned, I know we have these other places where people can go, but I'm concerned about how they know about it and how some of them may need help getting there. I was thinking that our Wheels, the Meals on Wheels comment we got early, earlier in the Citizens Forum, I'm wondering if we could reach out to some of our nonprofits, maybe some of our churches, synagogues, temples, people who maybe have access to other populations to help us make people aware that vaccinations are available and that there might be some resources to ensure that they get them. You know, I know seniors get less and less connection with, with people during times like this. They've gotten more isolated, and those are the populations we need to access. So people that are in care facilities, well, vaccines will come to them. We're going to go out and find folks that might not have shelter. But I think there's a, there's another vulnerable group there that, that may not become aware of the ability to get vaccinated. So I, I'm sorry to put you on the spot right now, but I would like at some point to sort of see if there's other ways we can connect and partner to ensure that everybody in our community gets a vaccine. I noticed in the statistics that you gave earlier on first and second doses, Livermore Pleasanton in Dublin, we have a larger population than Pleasanton by, you know, not a, not an insignificant amount, yet they've vaccinated more, more people. And I think the ratio of population Livermore to Dublin will also show that they're per capita, they're doing a little bit better. So I just want to put that out there as a request to see if there's some way we can, we can work on that as we get more and more vaccinations available. And I do have a couple other things, but would you want to respond to that now, or should I keep going?
Councilmember Banano, you are correct. Your staff is actually running through these lists of special populations, just like you were tonight, from those who are not mobile, to those who are senior, to those who are tech challenged, to those who have difficulty with mobility, all of those groups. And then those who have English language as a first language barriers, those who have work situations where they work long hours and are not able to get away to be able to be vaccinated. So we have a, a number of special needs populations that we'll be concentrating on there. And you noticed, like I did as well, that our, our friends in Dublin and Pleasanton are also being well vaccinated, and that is very good. But it does really reinforce the need for a local point of distribution here in Livermore. Because of our special needs populations, our low income populations, our English as a second language populations, and we are having lower vaccination rates. And for that reason, we need to go above and beyond to make sure that we get to the numbers we want. So we are both focused on that, and we'll be bringing information back as we make progress. It's a big county, and one of the things that is a challenge for us here in the Tri-Valley is to make sure that the county has the information to make great prioritization decisions with things like healthcare, low income services and other things, mental health care. Because as you note, we are not all well off in the Tri-Valley, even though our areas of poverty are differently distributed than they are on the other side of the hill. So we continue to work with our partners at the county to make sure we get those services. And you're exactly right, we're, we've got a lot of work out of us.
Oh, great, I, I'm glad to hear it. It sounds like you, you feel well aware of those special populations and are already thinking about it. And again, I'll just say, partners like Meals on Wheels, who already go to people who don't get out easily, might be an opportunity to partner and at least with that meal, make people aware that vaccinations are available and maybe provide some help. So a couple of quick things I'll just add. I attended my first LDI meeting, it was the board installation meeting last week, and that was, as you can imagine, a fun meeting. It was good to get to know some of the people that I'll be working with on the LDI board and to see them installed for their annual installation. Next week, I'll go to my first, let's see if I'm going to get it right, Livermore Amador Valley Water Agency meeting. So that'll, that I'll be able to report on next time. And the norms and values meeting, that's already been referenced. Councilmember Kick and I have the assignment to come back with some suggestion revisions to the norms and values. And we're looking forward to starting on that, and we will report back to you at some point in the future on that. So I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Okay, so I wanted to go back. I, last time I mentioned that I serve on the Transportation Communications and Public Works Policy Committee of the League of California Cities. And I wanted to talk a little bit about, so there was the East Bay League of California Cities legislative agenda. In addition, the, basically Infrastructure Policy Committee has some goals. Improving transportation, both digital and physical. So that's making sure that we get good use out of the funds, SB1 funds, which are for improving roads and bridges and freeways. But also really working on improving broadband, which is more increasingly being seen correctly as an absolutely necessary form of, of infrastructure. So, and then in addition, working towards better infrastructure resiliency all the way around. So that's what the goal of that committee will be going forward. Along with Councilmember Carling, I attended the East Bay League of California Cities meeting and heard the update as well. Also, was that the norms and values for some reason? I think we all were there. And then the evening of February the first. And then the evening of February the 1st. I was, one of the members of a panel put on by the Livermore Library, sponsored by his friends of Livermore. Looking at racism. So that included Travis Boyce of San Jose State. A director of multicultural Winston Chuno from Ohio University, Robert and Claire, a performance storyteller. Our own Shayna Pete and, and me. And it was moderated by Tina Jones-Williams. Shout out to Paul Savella for putting it together. It was really a well-done program. It should be somewhere accessible if you want to watch it on the website. But I haven't been able to find it yet. So, yeah. February 3rd, as Councilmember Carling mentioned, we interviewed candidates for LAAC. Superb group of students and I, you know, the future, if, if, if all we have to do is look to the, to who we have coming up in the world among our youth, our future is bright indeed. That evening, I attended the LCAC meeting and had a report there from the Heritage Guild. One of the things in, in looking at what Livermore Heritage is, this is a place where it, it does a huge amount of work in the, in the community. Spreading the word about Livermore's history and it's probably a place where people who are interested in increasing the breadth of that history could participate. In addition, that evening, we heard ways to include people with different abilities and different we heard about neurodiversity in all abilities and how we include those in particularly arts events. But it also applies to the kinds of things that Councilmember Kick was talking about in terms of making our own work more accessible. And then on February 4th, along with Councilmember Banano. I had the pleasure of subbing for the mayor and giving the mayor's report on TV 30. So, and that apparently is up and running for those who would like to see it. And that concludes my last couple of weeks.
Hey, thank you. I've attended a number of meetings. The Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors on the 27th. The Thursday, a lot of Alameda County Transportation Commission meetings. And then in the evening, there was a Metropolitan Transportation Committee meeting on the Blue Ribbon Transit Recovery Task Force. And the focus there was to what extent would there be a manager for coordinating all of the 27 or so transit agencies in the Bay Area? That's something that we need to watch carefully. The question is, make sure that we retain our local service that we have. And our LAPTA, for instance, has been the Transit Agency of the Year Award winner for several years. So there's a need to coordinate transit, but we don't want to lose the local good things that we're doing. So that's a key point that we're going to have to pay attention to. Was also attended the LAPTA Board of Directors meeting on the 1st. There was a Business Alliance meeting on the 3rd. Taped a Happy Chinese New Year message on Friday. And this morning, attended the Alameda County Transportation Committee Programs and Projects Meeting. And something that's interesting there that I'd like to mention to the council is that the one of the items that we dealt with today was completing the, excuse me, the express lanes, toll lanes with the segment, you know, there'll be a 40 mile, 48 mile segment from the north to the south. And what is interesting about that is one of the last pieces. But many of the commissioners voted reluctantly yes. And the reason is they'd rather be spending the money on alternative modes of transportation. But they noted that even though it's not their preference to spend the money this way. That the voters have voted for it through the various funding things. And so they were therefore they were going to support it. And that's something I think for all of us to keep in mind as we go to our various committee meetings. It's not what we personally believe, but it's maybe what the voters that we serve. But that the people took the opportunity to say, I relected I, you know, or relected yes, because that was a new category. But so it was a way for them to express their personal feelings, but still be consistent with the will of the community. So I think that, that I would point that out. The other thing I would like to suggest for all of us, and I didn't do it this time, and I intended to, but I will soon. Is actually write down the report and have it attached to the packet. Because I think it would serve the community well. Not very many people go to the end of these meetings to listen to us talk about these things. And if there are key points that we want to bring down, point out, let's write them down. Attach them there. And then there's a record of what meetings we've attended and what the key points were so that people can see it. So I would like to request the fellow councilmembers to begin writing this down. And then as we report out, we don't necessarily need to go through all of the, of the details. So that's, that's a suggestion for us, but I'll try and model that in the next meeting. So I'm about to adjourn the meeting, but I see Councilmember Kick would like to add something.
I have a question about the writing the things down. Would you like us to do that? Like by noon, so that it could go out in the supplemental information and send it to Marie?
I, that would be the goal. And the, the other point is we should also figure out how to attach it to our own, say, profiles on the council meeting. I mean, on the, on the council and their website, so that anybody can look at what committees we're on. And what we've been doing and what was important. So I think that would help. Not very many people are going to go through the various council meetings and look at the end of the meeting for what's going on. But I think that would be a very valuable service to the community if we did it that way.
When some of us get a social media account? I know only some of us will. And then I had one last thing before you close.
Okay, is this a report out or matters initiated?
Well, we can't. It's the first, it's the first meeting that's at nighttime that wasn't our, that's during Black History Month. So I have to say Happy Black History Month, and I'm so, so happy to see all the cool stuff that Livermore Reads Together is doing. I think everybody is at the event that's happening right now. And your event, Councilmember Monroe, is up on YouTube already. It's on the YouTube channel, not the city website. So if you go to YouTube, you can watch all of the things that are going on through the library. Very, very cool. March has been fantastic to read. So just a shout out and a thank you to our library staff for putting together a fantastic group of events. There's a lot more going on for the rest of the month. So I encourage everybody to look at the website and attend those events. They are very, very well done.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting to a regular city council meeting, virtual on February 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. So thank you all. See you next time. Bye.